Hi, let's call this joint meeting of the sanitary district and the town council to order, please. Do we do a roll call?
Yes.
Okay, let's do a roll call then.
Okay, sorry. Mayor Dickey.
Here.
Vice Mayor LaCron.
President.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Magazine.
Here.
Councilmember Sharnow.
Here.
Councilmember Spelitch.
Present.
Councilmember Tolles. Chairman Dudash.
Here.
Vice Chairman Butler.
Here.
Member Thompson.
Here.
Member Maroon.
Here.
Member Reske.
Thank you, that was okay. Thank you very much, I guess that's our, sort of our introductions, it says called order and introductions. I wanted to thank you for coming, we're really happy to be able to meet with you and want to say congratulations again, I know it was in July, but you had your 50th anniversary, and I have letters to give each of you to talk about the town's 50th anniversary, our 30th anniversary of incorporation and our 50th of the fountain, which I'll give that to you all as we move forward, but again, wanted to mention your special time and we really enjoyed having the opportunity to do the, have you all show us around, Dana gave us all the lowdown on what goes on over there, it's really quite amazing, so, thank you so much. So, let's see, what do we do here, are we gonna have Grady, are you gonna start, or got our first, our first item?
Well, mayor and council and district board members, we're very pleased to have you here tonight for this joint meeting. Dana and I are gonna jointly share the agenda as it relates to our respective areas, so I believe the first topic of interest is item number two, of which the district general manager will go over.
Thank you. Sure if you can hear me. Yes, item number two is an update on the sanitary district's project to construct and install recharge well control rooms, which are a joint facility and have public restrooms as well, at Fountain Park. I think you all have seen the construction fencing that's been up since about May, and the signage and active construction going on. We refer, the project entails the facilities at two of our different ASR recharge wells, and we refer to them as well two and four, but you may refer to them as the eastern side of the lake, which is by the parking lot, or the northern corner, which is at the intersection of Panorama Swallow. They are progressing, the eastern one, or well two, is moving ahead forward first, at ultimately, we can't do both of them at the exact same time, because we can't have more than one well out of service at a time. So well two is progressing very well, you, no pun intended, we get jokes all day. The building shell is up, if you get a chance to drive around it, the building, the exterior of the building walls and the interior is up, they're working on the roofing, next they'll be putting on the interior finishes, the toilets and the restrooms, and equipping the well control room, which has our control system and some water valving and flow meters and instrumentation and control panels back to our main controls at our treatment facilities. That building, and then following that will be landscape, and there'll be additional landscaping improvements around and some additional sidewalk to get into the facility, so that'll all happen. That's expected to last through December, and so we are pushing the contractor to have that facility up and open with a clear certificate of occupancy by December. Second, I'm pushing for the second week of December, maybe the third, but certainly before the Christmas holidays. And then well four will continue on after that, and that's gonna run through January, it'll follow for about a month afterwards, and hoping to wrap that one up by, the same process, they're just now starting on the walls, so, and so that one will run through the end of January. Other than that, I would be happy to take any questions.
Anybody have any questions? Council? Councilman Magazine?
Real simple one, will the facilities be locked up at any point, like at night or anything?
Yes, yes, the, there is a separate door for the well control room, which will have our lock and be an industrial style, you know, type electrical, or double electrical rated door, not rated, sorry, double door for electrical equipment locked, and then the front side of the restroom, or the front side of the building, which has the entrance into the restrooms, will have a lockable gate, much, very similar to the one that's at the existing restroom, kinda has a fan design, metal grate, and then that one will have a lock and a key that your parks department people have, so, yes.
Thank you. Councilman?
I don't have a question, but I would like to thank the district for doing this. I'm sure you're getting tired of being thanked for doing it, but it is...
No, no more, that's fine.
No, not at all, please, keep it coming.
Well, it is truly an addition to our town, and we appreciate it, thank you.
Mayor, if I may too, this is one of the most common complaints we hear about Fountain Park, is the fact that it's a 60 acre park, and we only have one restroom to service the entire park, so this is effectively going to like basically a, you know, three times the number of restroom facilities, and they're really convenient, I think that these locations are working out really well, so we really do really appreciate, and this is a perfect case and point of a win-win.
Yep.
You know, this is a need that you had, and certainly a need that our community needed for that park, so thank you very much.
Yes, absolutely, it's successful that the two of us can work together on this.
Of course, and Chairman, thank you, you also kept our, keep our staff informed, you asked us about signage and just all the, all of the communication for any projects, this one or anything going into the future, really appreciated. The next item is that, would you like to do it, or Dana?
Yes, so I just wanted to address this item, this is on the agenda because there is some participation on the part of the sanitary district, not necessarily participation, but having some input and feedback. As you're aware, the lake is a reservoir that we take water from the advanced wastewater treatment plant and utilize, and the last time we had this liner replaced was shortly after we had accepted it from MCO, I think it was around early 2000 or so. It's really approaching its useful life, it has a 30 year life, but given the temperature of the valley here and salinity of the water, we're thinking it's gonna be one of these things that we're gonna have to probably take care of the next probably three to five years. As part of this, this is gonna be quite a challenge, because the last time that this was done, we had a, over in Fire Rock, there was a, I don't know what it's called, but like an evaporation bed where we were able to pipe a lot of this water at that time, before that was in operation, to help dispose of the water. So this is gonna be a lot more challenging, because for one, we have, that's in operation, so that's not really gonna be available, we're gonna have to figure out and have some engineering help us identify what the dryup is gonna be, we're gonna have to coordinate with the district on not taking any more water at a certain point, and then we're gonna have to try to figure out how to, try to have that water naturally dissipate and evaporate. And just having some preliminary discussions with Dana, it makes a lot of sense, she's thinking the summertime, which is right now, that's when there's a big load and peak going on during the summertime, when we're not having as many toilets flushing and as much water being processed through the advanced wastewater treatment plant, but we're gonna have a lot more analysis that's gonna have to take place. I know that Community Services Director Rachel Goodwin is gonna be looking at this very closely, because there's a lot of logistical parts with, you know, a lot of moving parts to make this work. We're also gonna be looking at funding, and we're not looking to the district on this, but we're gonna be likely having to go, I would recommend at some point, to identify what our needs are for, say, the next 30 years or 40 years at Fountain Park, as it relates to the pumps, as it relates to the liner. We have talked about in the past having the electrical panels that are in the pump room replaced, right now, they're electromechanical, which they really don't make these types of things anymore, if you go in there, and I hate to say this, but every time you go in there, it looks like a laugh-in scene when you had Lily Tomlin acting as the operator, and she's going through a switchboard with all these cables, it looks just like that, it's that scary looking, so, and of course, that was, you know, almost 50 years ago, so we're gonna probably go to solid state circuitry with these new cabinets that we replace it with, but as you remember, a few years ago, we had a work-study session on this topic, on water quality, and one of the things we were talking about was also having a variable speed drive system, which would allow the pumps to go at various heights, we could do, you know, at various times when they come on, so that it takes less load and less electricity to power that. The sad thing is, is that when we did the analysis, it came back that it had a 20-year payback period or return on investment, well, that's about the useful life of those, but I will tell you that that did not factor in the useful life of the pumps, and the fact that the wear and tear, every time you start up those pumps, I think that you'll get a lot more life out of the pumps, and the pumps are, right now, we're talking millions of dollars to replace those pumps, so I think when it came back, that was alone about $400,000 for a system like that. So, the bottom line is, we wanted to bring this up, because we are gonna have to work very closely together, sanitary district, since we've received the water from the sanitary district, and we're gonna have to make sure that we're not causing any kind of issue, so, we're gonna probably help bring in some experts to help us with this, but sanitary district and the town will work jointly with those experts, and then I think what we'll do is, once we get a plan put together, we'll come back to both of our governing bodies and share that information, so that everybody's on the same page as to what expectations are.
Yes, sir.
All righty.
First of all, I'd like to thank the town for having, hosting us here for our joint meeting, we appreciate that. This topic is going to be more challenging, Grady pointed out a number of factors that are correct, but it's gonna be even more challenging than that, let me lay that out for you, that lake is 100 million gallons, we don't have the capacity at the sanitary district to just like, you know, if you have your bathtub, drain the bathtub and it's all gonna go away. We've got a slight excess capacity, and based on Director Butler's calculations, it would take us a year to drain 100 million gallons, in addition to what we normally do. Okay, we have a problem, we have to deal with wastewater within the boundaries of the sanitary district, which is the town, in order to do 100 million gallons, we're gonna need to go outside the town. We've got five places to go, we can go to the state trust land, which means we're gonna need to work with you guys to get, see if we can get permission to do that, we could go to McDowell Mountain Park, maybe drain there, again, the idea is, back in the old days, we had Fire Rock, we had where Target is, and we just drained there, we don't have that anymore, so we need desert land to drain, so perhaps McDowell Mountain. We have two amazing Native American communities next to us, maybe we can work with them. I think the town council has some relationships with both of those Indian communities, and let's see if maybe we can work out some deal there. And finally, we have Scottsdale, we can run a pipe up Shea, and if we got permission with Scottsdale, we could drain it that way, okay? But that will probably cost the district anywhere from a half million to a million dollars to do that, okay? So I'm just giving you some ideas. Now, as you think, oh, okay, we can handle that, guess what, we don't have the water to give you to refill the lake, okay? We, right now, give water to the town for free, class A plus effluent, we charge the golf courses, and we're running a shortage on what we're able to give to the golf courses, they would take more if we had it, we will not be able to give you 100 million gallons of water, and that's a problem. You'll probably need to go to EPCOR, and as I said, we do it for free, EPCOR not so much. The good news, though, is that you'll be getting potable water, which is drinking water, okay? And you won't have that sodium, and so you may not need to build an external tank, and you may be able to take the water out of the lake, at least for the first couple of years, because that water will be pretty decent, so that's the, that's the plus side of this. I'm assuming you're gonna have to go to a bond issue, and what we're going to do, the district will work with whatever consultant you guys bring on board, we will be there, we have top-notch engineers, you will always have at least one district board member who will be there, some of us have to work, but other ones are retired, so, whatever. This is a Fountain Hills project, we're going to work together with this, we are going to succeed, there, failure's not an option here, we're going to do it, but I wanna be realistic, I wanna identify what the factors are, we're going to identify the costs, and then we're gonna go to our amazing community and say, this is what it's gonna cost, and I think that everybody in this town loves that fountain, you'll get 100%, well, 99%.
Lots of luck is right.
Yes, um, okay.
Any questions? Councilman?
Sorry.
That's all right?
How do you know, you said approximately five years, how do you know? Could it be 10 years or 15 years?
Well, we, we're going to do some assessment of the actual liner itself, but my, my thing is, it's gonna take us some time just to kinda figure out the strategy or logistics on this. As the chairman mentioned, it's, it's not gonna be something you can just shut the water off and, and take care of, and I also think that this item ties to the next item on the agenda, which is, I think we might wanna time these things together, because at some point, we're gonna wanna have, maybe the lake ultimately is not where we draw in the future, where we irrigate the park with, maybe we have a storage system that's actually taking water that's cleaner and not sitting in a salinity and getting worse and worse over time. So, I think the chairman had an interesting thought about portable water, I'm not sure that the cost is there for us to do, I definitely know we can't do that ongoing, but certainly that might be something we could do initially, but, but more importantly, I think we need to think about the future, and the future, I think, is we need to have a, a storage system where we can then irrigate the park vegetation and the grass, and then I also think that, ah, I lost my thought on that, but there, it's obviously, as you can see, there's all these different moving parts, and they all need to be part of the same strategy, and so when we're dealing with ultimately the lake liner, oh, I know, so what I was gonna say is, so, once the, once we stop using the lake for the irrigation, then that will be more or less a sealed system, in other words, we'll still take water periodically from the sanitary district to kinda keep it at a, you know, a level amount, but we'll probably have it more or less chemically balanced, so we don't get the odor issues and all that, and that, we're gonna have to do that, so...
You started to answer my second question, which is, excuse me, I'm sorry, has anybody discussed the smell, how to ameliorate that, because citizens will go crazy.
Well, we, we, right now, I, I think we did a really good job a few years ago, we installed a new aeration system, and my understanding in a, in two days, it puts enough of the water through the system what used to take seven to 10 days, so in other words, it's, it's going through, it's filtrating the water, or filtering the water, it's, it's circulating water, we have a lot more pressure and, and it's moving a lot more water than it did before. We also periodically, during major blooms of algae, we use hydrogen peroxide, I think it is, to help with the odor control, and we've also have used a deodorizing chemical as well. We try to be, we try to be careful on the chemicals, because we do have some fish that are like bottom feeders, that kinda feed on the bottom of the lake, that kinda keep some of the blooms and other things, it's kind of an ecological system, so you don't wanna totally have it be a tidy bowl, because right now, it, if you did do that, you could probably keep it, you know, in check, but I think right now, the way it's been working is pretty good with having it be kind of an ecological type system that is working, it's much like if you look at the fountain, as you come into town at Shea and Palisades, we have some reeds there, and the reeds actually help filter the water that's there naturally, so it's kinda the same kinda concept.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, just a couple questions, by the way, Chairman Dudash, your, your talk was so uplifting and full of so many positives, I can't even, can't even go into detail.
You're welcome.
Is, is it, the sanitary board will no longer be using that then, as a storage?
The, the original design and function of the lake was intended to be a reclaimed water reservoir, and it's still very much functioned in that, in that, in that capacity as it is now, so yes, it is, it is a vital part of the reclaimed water storage system, not as much as it used to be, now that we have recharge wells, we do have the capacity to put excess reclaimed water, we can now store it via recharge wells underground. The, the, the amount of reclaimed water that's produced exceeded the capacity of the lake by the late 80s, I think it is, and so, by, by the time we got into the 90s with more and more development, that's when we really got into a crunch, realizing that the capacity of the lake was a little smaller than what we need for our system as a whole, so that's why we went to the well systems, but they still play, it still plays a vital part, it, it also has the capacity to take up volumes of water when our, some of our wells are down, they are heavily, they are very much a maintenance item, it requires a lot of attention, and so that we go through periods of times when wells are down, and so, having that extra volume in the lake is, is a place that we need to be able to put water in a, in a short-term crisis, when, or when there's wells are down, and we've gotten a lot of rain, and nobody's using water, it's cooler in the winter, that kinda thing, so it's still a vital part, so yes, we would still be sending water to the reclaim.
If I may, Dana, you explained it earlier, but if you could just restate it, the golf courses now are getting direct ties of water from the advanced wastewater treatment plant, whereas before, they were getting it from the lake, correct?
Up, up until around 2000.
Right.
Up around, until...
I mean, I love the idea of the partnership and everything, and I don't want you to take this the wrong way, but it seems like the, the partnership goes all the way up to the level of not contributing any money towards this project, is that what, is the town gonna be on the hook for all of this?
Well, we haven't really gotten into that kinda discussion, but my, my understanding is, keep in mind that through the IGA we have with the sanitary district, we're not paying a cent for the water, so all these years, we've had no cost for the water that we utilize for ourselves, so...
What do you mean for ourselves?
Well, we irrigate our park, and it, and I think, is it...
And two other parks.
How many gallons a day?
800,000 gallons per night.
800,000 gallons a night that we irrigate?
It's 400,000 on a standard.
Okay, I apologize.
It's about 670.
So, a typical day is 400,000, but during like the summer, when it's hot, peak time, it's about 600,000.
Well, I love the partnership, but I'll really love the partnership if you guys cough up some money.
Well, that, there might be some more partnership on the item number four, which might, and that has yet to be really discussed, that's a, probably a board council item to, for them to kinda figure out, that's something that might be partnership.
I couldn't even speculate what the cost would be if we have EPCOR fill that with, I mean, if we had to pay to have that filled.
Again, the problem that we have, once you have it filled back, we'll be able to maintain the level, but there is no way for us to generate 100 million gallons of effluent, just like opening a tap sign, which is physically not, not possible, so I don't know how we help with that.
I'm not even sure that they could do it either, I mean, that's, that's a huge, that would impact, that would impact our residents and their, their water pressure and everything while they're trying to fill that up pretty quickly.
Maybe you cut it with CAP or something, but again, we are gonna work with you, we have some great engineers, and at every step of the way, we're gonna work with you to try to figure out the most economical and most efficient way to get this done, we're all part of the same team here.
Thank you.
Councilman Sharnow?
I was gonna say, maybe if we throw in a bathroom or two, would that help the, you know, the cooperation, and, you know, I'm just throwing that out there.
I don't want anyone misunderstanding that.
If I may?
Yes, Chairman, I mean, sorry.
That's all right, no, so, so last time we replaced the liner, what was the catalyst for that being replaced, is this something that, that really need to be preemptive, or is this something that we wait until there's a leak? What's gonna be the catalyst that, that happened in the past and may be the catalyst in the future?
Well, my, my take on it is, it has a 30-year life, and we're now into, you know, we'll be into 2020, and by the time, we're talking about maybe 2025, close to that time period, so my, my concern is, we do not wanna have a issue where we have a leak, or if we, if we get a leak, then we start talking about issues of maybe sinkholes, or we might actually get into problems, because right now, a lot of what we have in that park flows into Panorama Wash, which then ends up going to the Indian Reservation, and we've had issues in the past with having some of the flows going over to their golf course, they're not happy about that, so, there, there's some impacts on that, and we've had some residents ask us that very question about, well, what if we just let it go, what would be the worst, and my concern is, it's not like, you know, like where you build dams, where you might have the bedrock, would actually kinda like be waterproof, and it's not that situation, you know, so the liner is really keeping the water from seeping and going under the ground, so, but what's precipitating this whole issue is the, the, the need for us to be good stewards and making sure that we keep up on our maintenance and, and replacement schedules, and so, this is identified in our capital facilities plan we have.
When, how did we fill it up last time?
I'll have our Community Services Director, who wasn't here at the time, but she's done a lot of research on this.
And what year was that?
2000, 2000 or so.
I believe it was in 2000.
Wes.
Thank you, Grady, and, thank you for the question, because I actually have a little background that might help answer that, and give a little more detail to what we were talking about, so, the answer is yes, it was undertaken in 2000, the project began May 1st of 2000, and it was completed November 1st, it was November 1st that we began to refill, and it took until potentially February to actually refill, so my understanding is that it did come from the sanitary district, but it was not an overnight process, to your point, it was definitely a very long and arduous process. At that time, it looks like, based on the dates that I could find, May 10th through June 15th is how long it took to drain the, the lake, so it was, again, not a, not a quick process, and that is when we had the Fire Rock drainage areas. To your point, to your question about what precipitated the process, at that time, we had an assessment done of the liner, the liner at that time was made of PVC quality, it was tested, it was found to be failing in certain areas, there was also site testing done to say that there's concrete cracks happening, it was, it was time, there's also evidence of leaking of the water through the, through the liner too, based on what Grady just mentioned about things making it down the wash, so all indicators were there, that was sort of what kicked off that process. When that happened, we did go into a 20-year warranty, and that started, again, right there at the end of 2000, so that means the end of next year, 2020, we are, that, that warranty will be up.
Rachel, it's a 20-year warranty, but they told us it should have a life of 30 years.
Correct, the, the lifespan is expected between 20 and 30 years, we are in a, what I would call a better-than-average situation, in that we have had an assessment done, just a site assessment, in order to have the actual liner tested, they need to lower the lake water level, they need to get to the actual liner and cut a, essentially a five-by-five section out of the existing liner to test it, they're not recommending that at that, at this time, there's nothing indicating that we need to go to that extent and then essentially rupture the liner at this point.
My concern is, that's like a skin graft, and I'm just really concerned that that would be really accelerating the deterioration of the liner, so I would not probably recommend that.
Absolutely, and that's exactly what the consultant mentioned to us, it's also not a cheap process, it's roughly $15,000 to run that assessment, just to know where we're at, and it also, is just a site point as well, if we test here, it's still not giving us a full indicator of what's happening subgrade, or, you know, beneath the, the different bios underneath and things like that, so, we did have a site assessment done, we did get, so when the liner was replaced in 2000, the quality that they chose to use was very, very high at the time, and it still remains to be a very high-quality material, it's, what they told us when they did the site assessment was that it is one step below what is used at nuclear power plants for their discharge, so, it's good quality, and that's a great thing, and that means that I, I think we've... So it's good quality, and that's a great thing, and that means that I think we've seen why we've made it through twenty years and hopefully several more years before we have to undertake this process. So hopefully that answers some of the questions that you guys had.
It's too bad that Pala Veri is now a little bit closer, so we can get them this water.
I know. So, other questions that I can answer for you?
If I remember correctly, though, one of the things that was done this time was there was an under-surface put in. Last time it was laid over the bedrock, the first time, I'm sorry. This time, there wasn't there some sort of a?
Subgrade or something?
Sand bed.
There was compacting done, and there was a treatment there, yes, so that?
And so, you know, now to bring, to bring a little light to this, this thing can last fifty years. We don't know.
Board member?
I could add one more thing to that. I think under that liner, this time, we're in 2000, they put a geotextile fabric there to keep rocks that might want to maneuver upward, to keep them in control. So there is a geotextile fabric under the liner.
There you go. That would make sense from what all of the documentation I've been able to find.
And if you could find the file, there is a sample of both products in the file.
As you know, we're looking. That's not something that gets stored on a computer drive, unfortunately.
I'm sure Randy knows where to find it.
So we're, we're on the hunt, to say the least, absolutely. And so I think, and to your point about this being not an easy process, and there's a lot of factors, we were looking through the process, and there is a lot of wildlife. There are fish and turtles and other things in the lake that have to be relocated. We have to find a place for them and figure out how that is going to work, that process. If we become a sealed system, how does that affect the ecology of the park and all of the wildlife and the birds and things like that that we have down there that call, you know, we have eagles, we have herons, we have other things that make Fountain Park their home. I think we all remember our, was it pelicans that came last winter? So we do have an ecological system down there that needs to be considered in this process as well.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Rachel.
Rachel?
Do you have any idea of your timeframe? Because my assumption would be you would want that between the two art fairs. That's sort of my working hypothesis.
That would be a really great benchmark to consider, yes.
Right, so then in the summer?
Yes.
Maybe some of your migratory birds won't be here in the summer.
Absolutely not. But we want them to come back, for sure.
Well, thank you. So, yes Dana?
I would like to add a comment that I heard some questions, okay, it's a twenty-year warranty, but maybe a thirty-year life, and why are we starting to look into this now? I think it's absolutely appropriate to do this in a very forward-thinking, proactive manner. Because of the constraints of our system, we don't have discharges available to go to rivers and washes. Because of the constraints of how to get water to fill it back up, because of all those planning events, we don't want to wait until it becomes a matter of crisis because of your funding challenges and if it becomes a bond issue. And so, so while I did hear you all say, you know, well, why are we looking at it now? This could be a five- or seven-year process to kind of get the logistics out, the funding out, and to work through the details. So I applaud you for starting to take it on early.
Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you. Especially like where to, those, the ways that you said to possibly distribute the water. I had gotten an email from a resident that mentioned some of those things, and I think it's never going to be too early to talk about what would we do as far as trying to empty it out and then, of course, put it back in. And it's not like we're moving on anything right now, but this is the kind of stuff that requires a lot of planning, so there's absolutely nothing wrong with doing that ahead of time.
Agreed.
You know, we're happy to do that. The next item is, Grady, is that yours or?
Again, it's mutual, but I'd have this placed on the agenda, because it kind of ties a little bit to the previous topic that we just discussed, and that is, when we had the workshop on the water quality, one of the recommendations out of that was a, having a water storage system that would allow us to basically have, for whatever purposes the terminology of, you know, cleaner water, that we might go ahead and irrigate with less salinity to the water. And so I think this is really essential, and again, this is one of these other moving parts that I think would be something we'd want to have constructed at the time that we're dealing with this or in advance of this. So probably wants to be done so that once the lake no longer is having water come out for irrigation, we have this other alternative to draw water from and irrigate. Because I'd hate to lose the vegetation in the park, the trees or shrubbery. There's a huge sink, sunken investment in those, the grass, I'd hate to have an issue there. So even though it's summertime, in summertime, you know, we have Bermuda grass, which tends to be hardier, I just hate to let that all go. So what I think we're going to need to do is we're going to need to identify, again, the logistics, where would this be located? How much would it cost? In talking with Dana, you know, I have some thoughts that maybe it might be either located at the park, possibly it might be located at the best advanced water, wastewater treatment plant. But in any case, I think that this is something that's long overdue. I think that this would really be something that will help ensure that we have grass that thrives. I don't think everybody's aware of it, but the grass that we have has a really hard time. So much sodium comes out of the water, and a lot of it's not really because of what is coming from the advanced wastewater treatment plant, but it's just that the stagnant water that sits there in the lake over time just builds up the salinity. And then that's what, of course, what we use to irrigate our vegetation and our grass. And so even though we've installed certain systems, we have a system over with the irrigation system now that, it's an ejection system that helps remove all the saline out of the sprinkler heads so that we're not getting those clogged, because that's been a big problem we've had over the years. We also have had over time, the water is not able to go into the grass very deeply. And so I'm very confident with our park superintendent and our community services director that they've been able to do things that have really, I think, have improved the grass and the quality of that water going out there. But it's still, it's still not ideal, and we really want to have, having a better water quality actually go out to the vegetation and the grass. So I think this is an absolute thing that we need to do, and I think that this would be, if we're going to go ahead and bond for some of the other items we mentioned, this would clearly be part of that as well. So obviously, the big deal we have before us, I think, tonight is we need to put together a plan and get some outside help to help us figure out the logistics as to how all this is going to work, so.
Councilman Charnow?
Yes, thank you. I know Kevin, our parks guy, isn't here tonight, but we're pretty confident that kind of system would kind of resurrect the grass and the soil, because, I mean, it's been decades of those conditions you just described, and without doing additional treatment to the soil and whatnot, we think better water would kind of resurrect them.
He's actually, he really increased the water, watering, the last couple of years, and we've noticed between that and some of the other things that he's done, the water's starting to permeate a little bit more, and the root system is starting to be a little bit more of a deeper growing root system. He's pretty confident that no matter what, whenever you have a better quality of water, you're going to have, the vegetation's always going to grow better. To your point, though, my understanding, when we had the last installation of the liner, for whatever term you want to call it, I understand a lot of sludge came out of that bottom of the liner, and a lot of that got put over by where the amphitheater is, where the grass really has a hard time growing, all the big bare spots. And then over the area behind Plaza Found Side, some of that is over there, so we have issues with that soil over there having, and he's convinced, he's taken it on a challenge to try to get those areas restored, and he's had some mixed results, but not nearly what we think we would have if the soil hadn't been contaminated with all those organic materials and salt.
Well, of course, you've got the problem to the extent that you're taking that water directly out of the advanced wastewater treatment plant and putting it in a storage tank, that that's going to increase your issues with the water that's in in the lake. Because by pumping it out of the lake now, you're helping the process of keeping it somewhat lower in the contaminants.
Very good point, but I do think if we have a fresh start with basically a new liner, and we're not going to have all that material in there, you're absolutely right, I do think we're going to have the same issue, but it's going to take many years to get, like it has now. So I think we'll have the same issue over time, but I think the good news is we won't be drawing that out to irrigate. And I think we can still maintain, as we talked about, that ecosystem like we have currently that's out there.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next, we're talking about density and future projects. Is that you, Grady, again?
I think this item was placed on here just to kind of get, at the staff level, we try to work hard and communicate frequently to be aware of what's going on as far as proposed projects and proposed developments. But I don't know how much of it, of those conversations maybe happen between these two boards, these two, the council and the board, so we could have an opportunity to exchange information about?
Yeah, and we, we had some hiccups, I'll be honest with you. When I first started, we had some hiccups with our staff, not always keeping Dana and her staff informed about. Anytime we might have had or met with a developer that had a proposed project, we, when I say hiccups on that, I mean, we would always tell them that they needed to talk to sanitary district, but it was usually not as early in the process as when they met with us. And I can tell you, we've been very sensitive to that, and we're doing that much more so now, like with the Keystone development, we did that, we also did it with Daybreak. There's another one that's in the works right now that it's too early to make public, but we've made them aware that they need to work very closely with the sanitary district to get a sewer services agreement. So we're doing more of that. We wanted to just kind of put that on, because I think that maybe the board in the past is aware that there might have been issues in past years, but I think we've got that worked through for the most part.
I think so, and so I do appreciate the advance notice and the communication. And why that's important is because of our, much of the area, our infrastructure is already built out, and it was sized to things that were twenty, thirty, forty, almost fifty years ago. And so when a parcel then comes in and gets redeveloped at a much higher density than assumptions were made twenty, thirty, or forty years ago, the infrastructure can't handle it. We're not like a pressurized water system where you can push more water through it if you bump up the pressure. Being a gravity sewer system, there's a set amount of capacity you can handle, and that's about it. And so if any of these larger developments have impacts to the infrastructure, we, of course, want to make that known to the developer very early on in the process, because what their contribution would have to be to remedy that. So the later they're notified, then sometimes they might, would get surprised by a requirement the sanitary district might have to upsize something or, so, but to the point, I think we're trying to iron out all of those hiccups that makes sure staffs, not just you and I, but your staff, my staff, communicate that.
And Dana has been really good too, because we've had, just to ensure that we don't miss anything, we've also have, basically their engineer comes over and picks up plans and reviews plans, and we have an understanding that on things that really don't have to do with the sanitary district, sanitary district doesn't need to take off or review those plans. Even though we haven't had an issue with that, that will help streamline the process and get a little bit, slightly better turnaround time on plan reviews. So in other words, you know, as an example, we might have a building that might have a sign that might be on the building. That's a perfect example, that that doesn't need to be in the same box as something that involves having a, you know, a sewer, or maybe a sign, a monument sign that might be right near a sewer line. So we're also trying to identify for sure the projects that there's synergy and it makes sense to have their review, but others that clearly are not, you know, hot water heaters and things like that, they don't need to be saying that kind of things, so.
Any questions? Thank you. Welcome, Boardman Reske, thank you for coming. The next one is about water softeners. Just wanted to say straight out that a while ago, I got some good information from you all for mag staff that, about water softeners, and they were unaware of some of these concerns that aren't only local and statewide, but they're actually national, if you look at it, this is a big problem. So is that you, Grady, or Dana?
I'll take that one, yes. This was a subject that was brought up at the last time, there was a joint session between town council and district board. And so it's on here again, only just to kind of keep it in everybody's awareness. We haven't solved the issue yet, and technologically, it is a very challenging and hard and expensive problem to solve. The issue is, is that if you think about it, every, most people have, a majority of people have water softeners because of the hard water supply, CAP water or even the groundwater here. And for every bag of salt that you pour into a water softener, it gets dissolved and ends up in the sewer system, which ends up in the reclaimed water, which ends up getting delivered to the golf courses, to Fountain Lake, to Golden Eagle Park, to Desert Vista Park, which is used to water the grasses and the turfs of all of those facilities within Fountain Hills. And so we do have a high salinity issue in the reclaimed water. The salinity, the salinity or the measurement of salt in the reclaimed water, it's double what it is in drinking water, and that is attributed solely to water softeners. There are areas in the country that have gotten to a point of crisis that so much salt impacted, say, their water table, and they can no longer sustain their agricultural practices. So other parts of the country have gotten to a place where they have an ordinance saying water softeners are no longer allowed. I don't, you know, we're not there, and we're not at a point of crisis. If we ever got to be at that point, that would be, have to be something that the board and the town council would have to work on together. But I'm not raising any red flags right now, just bringing up the issue. The sanitary district would like to start more of a public education campaign about that. However, just because of our staff and resources and time, we've been focusing on the well-well replacement project. So that one got pushed back on the back burner for a little bit, much to Director Thompson's chagrin. But we will get there. So, you know, there's a lot of things in a public education campaign that kind of need to make the public aware of, that there's an alternative to a salt or a sodium-based salt that goes in water softeners, it's a potassium-based salt. It is more expensive, but if you did the math on how many bags of salt you actually buy in a year, it might be the difference between, say, fifty dollars a year and two hundred dollars a year, four times the cost. But overall, there are people who make that choice now, just from, as an environmental consumer, and choose to make that choice now because they're aware of it. So we'll be putting out information like that. There are other types of water conditioner, water conditioners that aren't softeners at all. And so I think that the plumbing, the plumbers and the water softener supplier community and industries and businesses are kind of catching up with everybody and recognizing that it's not just recycling anymore, and it's not just straw, you know, using plastic straws or metal straws, and now it's going to be about the salt that you put into the wastewater. So, again, that was just an item, just to kind of keep everyone aware of and know that at some point, if we had to move forward, it would be something that we would need to move forward with, as the town as a whole.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Dana, when you and I had our one-on-one when I was first elected, I had no idea about, you know, the salt and how it affects our water table and how it affects the lake and all that. I had had an idea that I had discussed with you, and the idea was possibly the town as well as the sanitary district possibly purchasing in bulk the potassium, due to the fact that potassium is very cost prohibitive, especially for seniors and people that are on a fixed income. My idea also was that if we could do a bulk purchase of the potassium to get the cost of the, down more, so that residents would be more interested in switching over from salt to potassium, that we would also involve Fountain Hills High School, some of these students that could deliver the salt to the senior residents who wouldn't be able to lift the fifty-pound bags and everything. So I would be interested if we could maybe further the discussion. I know that storing that somewhere, a semi-full of potassium bags, would be somewhere where we'd have to come up with an idea of where to store it. But I did mention it to people, my ex- Actually, my next-door neighbor is the vice president of a water company and he's very up on all that stuff. He said that he knew for a fact that the company that produces potassium would do something like that. And I'd be interested if we could further the discussion and see if there's a possibility that we could do bulk purchases, what the cost of that would be, how we would market it to the residents, get the high school involved because they have to do community service. So, if we could, any way that we could kind of get together and put our heads together and possibly do more. It was alarming that at the Fountain Hills Leadership Academy, two or three people did their whole presentation on salt and just really the effects. And until you hear it and learn about it, you really, you kind of don't pay any mind to it. So, I'd like to see if we could escalate it and see if there's anything that we could do. I'd be more than happy to help in any way I could, but I think it's a problem that we should maybe see how we could solve it.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And yes, I would set up a meeting with Grady and anybody who wanted to attend could. I think that would be a great discussion to kind of get more into the weeds and the details of those kind of issues and appreciate it being a joint effort, that it's not something just an expectation we expect of the town or the town just expects of the district. Because it is, it's a community problem. If you start to tune your eye to it, you see it in the grass at the park or you see it at the grasses and the golf courses and just understand the impact it has on such a long-term basis of that, use of that water. So, no, that would be a great idea if there was some sort of common partnership, work towards that end goal.
Dana, I'm just wondering, you know, nowadays, you know, you're starting to see, like with appliances, they're all like, you know, energy certified by the Department of Energy. They have higher SEER, AC or heat pumps. They qualify for rebates from, you know, the electric company. Are there higher, more higher efficient, like water softeners that maybe use less and maybe if people are motivated to get their systems replaced, that they might, that might be another way of doing it is like through a rebate or something? I mean, it doesn't have to be a lot, but I was just looking at replacing mine as an example and I think it was like, just looking online, it was a Home Depot and it was like $3.79 to replace my equivalent one. It talked about it being ultra-high efficient, you know, using less and, you know, so forth. Just wondering if that might be something that maybe if we can encourage people to replace their older units with something that's more high-efficient, then that might be another way of getting at this as well. I like the idea of the potassium for sure because I think that a lot of people are very environmental in this community and I think that there would be people regardless of if they got the message that this is a problem, I think people would still do that regardless. But I'm just wondering if that might be, if you're familiar with that at all.
I couldn't speak directly to how efficient a water softener is, especially one that was put in, say, 20 years ago and how they are now. Unfortunately, I don't know that. I do know that when I've looked on, say, websites for a water softener company, if you were looking to hire a company to come in and replace yours, at least nowadays, they usually have a tab or an extra product line that says a salt-free base system. And so, again, kind of in that, in that environmental line of, say, recycling and or removing straws, I think the industry is listening to that and will push, will start to develop more efficient, more cost-effective, non-salt versions. So, we'll prob, hopefully, but I don't know how many years that would take, 20 or 30, to get completely away from salt, but I think it'll go there. Maybe sooner than, at the heart of a water softener, it's chemistry and so it can only be as efficient as chemistry.
Okay. I think Councilman Spellick's idea is a good one. I had no knowledge of this until our last joint meeting. Never heard of it. I mean, I knew the salt was a problem, but there'd been no discussion of water softeners and so on. I think to do something like this, you have to have a pretty major educational process to educate the citizens because like Councilman Spellick and me, you know, we had no idea and I'm sure my neighbors have no idea. And so, you really have to put it in front of people and tell them what the alternatives are.
Yes, Councilman?
I would make the statement that over the past, I would say, eight years, we are seeing more and more filtration systems opposed to softening systems that we're installing. I have not installed a water softener in at least eight and maybe even 10 years, but we are going to, they're quite a bit more money, but we're going to the filtration systems that have the different chemicals that the water passes through and is quite successful. So, I, what I'm trying to say is that over the last eight years, there have just been so many strides forward to eliminate salt systems altogether that I think that I would propose, if I were going to make a proposal, was if you have to replace your salt system, replace it with a filtration system and don't go to a salt. Now, that would be a start for the town. And I only have one question of the district. When we first started having our meetings, it was my understanding that the Fountain Lake was mandatory for the district to have for an overflow system or, and I don't know that I can use the right terminology, but it was mandatory that that Fountain Lake be there for the sanitation district, not just for the town? Is it still that way? Could you shut the Fountain, Fountain Lake clear off and still be legal with the, all the requirements with the state and the federal government?
Yes, it's not a legal requirement to have it, but it does, it does have an operational purpose. As Director Dudas had mentioned earlier, we don't have any discharges. Every drop of wastewater within the town and within our jurisdiction, within our boundaries, has to be converted to high-quality recycled water and reused within our jurisdiction. We don't have any options to send it anywhere else. And so, using the lake, in a typical year, we'll get 650 million gallons of wastewater. And then, we use quite a bit of internal water for some internal cleaning processes and so we have about 500, those are minus 50 million gallons of reclaimed water in a year that we need to find places to dispose of. And luckily, the golf courses would use every drop of it if we have it. But the town parks use it as well and the lake uses it. It consumes it by evaporation just from the lake and then evaporation from the fountain. And then, it also feeds your irrigation system for the turf around it. And it also serves the purpose as an emergency storage when, as I mentioned before, when we get snow in February and nobody takes a drop of water for two weeks straight because they're recovering from a snow event, at some point, we need to have places to store millions of gallons of water. And so, it does serve that purpose, but I wouldn't say it's a legal mandate to have it.
And one other comment, when the Fountain Lake is completely full, it is much prettier than when it's three feet down, three and a half feet down. Is there any way that we might be able to keep it up to the foot and a half like we have it right now? Is that even a conversation we could have?
Well, there needs to be a volume set aside for storm events. It's probably full because we just had a pretty good rain.
We did.
In addition to, as we start to get into cooler temperatures, we do need to be able to put more water into the lake. So, it's a safety buffer, again, because if we got a big rain event or if it was already full and couldn't take any more water from reclaimed water storage and then had a big rain event and it started to overflow, it would go into a wash that would then fall onto a Native American tribal lands and that starts to get into violation of discharge permits.
Got it. Thank you.
Councilman?
Yeah, real quick, a little bit off topic, but you mentioned public education. I just wanted to point out as a board member for the Fountain Hills Coalition that the sanitary district has been, we're cooperative with the coalition, been coming to our sector meetings and that kind of thing and been publicizing our prescription drug drop-off box here at Town Hall. And we have a drop-off day outside Town Hall here with the sheriff's office on October 26, I believe. And just got my bill, user fee bill the other day, thank you very much. But on the back, you know, they do have public announcements and they talked about the drug take-back day, so coalition appreciates that. And of course, we don't want our residents flushing prescription drugs and that stuff down the drain either or down the toilet because we don't want it in the sanitary system. So, I just wanted to make a point of that.
Thank you. Mike? Anybody else have any questions? Yes, sir.
Make a comment. Two years ago, when Tom Reske and I ran for reelection, one of the issues that we confronted was more active involvement with the town. And I'm very happy to see that we're fulfilling that promise that we made. And one of the things that happened is we've got Grady and Dana working together, I think, monthly.
Every other month, of course.
Okay, well, okay. I tried to make you look good, Grady. Come on.
We're on the phone frequently with one another.
Yeah, but I mean, the point is, we're having those discussions which we didn't have before and our goal is to solve problems mutually, okay? So, we've got our points of contact and we're going to solve problems together. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything for the good of the order? Anybody have anything they would like to add? Our appreciation, of course. It's just like you were saying, the, we had the legislators at our last council meeting. We said, you know, we have all of the same constituents and they expect us to work together for them, whether we're solving problems or moving positive things forward. So, we really appreciate you coming and if there's nothing else, I'll take a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Aye. Thank you, thank you.